All right, welcome. It is six o'clock on Wednesday, September fifteenth. I want to call the order of this special school board or the study session. I have a special meeting of the school board. Before we get started, I want to remind everyone that masks are required at our school board meetings and all indoor activities within the school. So this time, will everyone please rise and join me?
I'd like to read this to the final of the United States of America and to open with what it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with the repeated choices for all.
For the next item, two point oh one is the adoption of the agenda. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda or to propose any changes.
Andrew, I have a question on the board consent agenda. If we if we approve the agenda as written now, will we be able to pull out any of those or discuss them if?
If needed.
If needed. Yes.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think. Because we're just approving that item. We're not necessarily saying how we're gonna.
Okay, because you can always break up. Okay, got it. Then I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
All right, there's been a motion to approve the agenda as written. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Here it is. All right, the next item on the agenda, three point oh one is an update on the superintendent search process. At our special school board meeting on June fifteen, three months ago, I can't believe that's how long ago it's been, but. We interviewed three search firms and made a unanimous decision to engage services of Northwest Leadership Associates. Specifically, we hired two of the firm's consultants, Wayne Robertson and Mark Ben, to lead our search. At about the same time, the board selected Northwest Leadership Associates, Dr. Quinn and her team were interviewing candidates to find a new director of communications and community agent for the district. As you know, their process ended with the hiring of Selena Rodriguez at officially at our office school board meeting. And while Selena has many strengths that she brings to to the district, there is her recent experience and her experience and her recent experience serving as a liaison between the Mount Vernon School Board and the search consultant at Northwest Leadership Associates. They use the same firm for their search. So it's very fortunate for us. Selena has been through similar process out of nearby district. And when I asked her, she agreed to take the lead role from the district side in facilitating our process in Ferndale. So Selena has made arrangements for Wayne Robertson to join us this evening via Zoom. She's also put together two documents that we received Monday night attached to Dr. Quinn's weekly update that have also been posted on board docs. So at this point, I'm going to turn the floor over to Ms. Rodriguez to make any other introductory comments and then get us started with a conversation with Dr. Robert.
You ready for me?
You need to. You all have the two documents. Okay. Well, I am familiar with that and the items on those documents. I can't take care of it because they did come from Northwest Leadership. Um, and I do have to say that I am so grateful to have one go around under my belt going into the process with the Ferndale team. Um, with that, I'd like to contact Dr. Robertson.
All right. Well, thank you very much. And it's it's gonna be fun working with Selena again on this. She played a very important role in the Mount Vernon search. As you know, I'm Wayne Robertson, and I'll be one of the two consultants working with the Ferndale district on your superintendent search. Mark Ben would be here tonight, but he's camping somewhere in British Columbia, and we were nervous about his internet connection and thought that he could pass on this event. But for most activities, the two of us will be present and working as a team with support from the other associates at Northwest Leadership and Dennis Ray and Tom Rockefeller, who are kind of sharing the CEO position with our firm now. We're excited about working with the district on the Ferndale search. This is gonna be it's an excellent job. The district has a great reputation. You're in a nice timeline window and with Linda's transition and Mark's transition into the interim role. So I think you're in a good spot all the way around and we look forward to facilitating the search for you. I I know you have a busy agenda. I looked over your agenda and and I appreciate being in the leadoff role and but you have a lot of work to do. So I can go a number of directions. We can go fairly quickly through the agenda that I sent you, or we can pick up parts of it or do Q and A or however you'd like to do it. Some direction from you. We'll get us started, please.
Well, I I know we're all anxious to to know the next steps and where we're going from here. So we can start with that. And then as we go, board members feel free to ask questions.
Good idea. If you I know you have the agenda in board docs, and we probably don't need to have it on the screen. But just very quickly, the first couple of items are just background. And you know that from the earlier comments about the interview in June and the selection of Northwest Leadership, and you took action on our contract in June. So we're we're off and running. We submitted a timeline that is just a draft, and we look at kind of your board meeting dates and and just kind of some general considerations around holidays and vacations and such. And we put together a timeline that works for Mark and myself, but that's just a draft, and we would expect to work with staff, Selena and and others in the district to fine tune that and move it around to make it work for you. So that is probably the next step, and we don't have to do that tonight, certainly, given the the scope of your meeting. But that gives you a general idea of starting soon in October, probably, and finishing up by your spring break and having the position posted in December, open through the winter break, open through through the January and February probable closing date of February twenty five, which is a nice long window, but it's early enough where you're still in that sweet spot. I'm a report to the board selection of semifinalists in March and probably two rounds of interviews toward the end of March with an announcement of a selection right around the end of March. We picked March twenty five, but that's a to be determined day. The other next step would be kind of two levels of posting. The first one is very simple. Get it posted on the Wassa and Wasda websites. Sometimes we post positions on the AAS, AAS, A, the National Association website. We're really not big fans of that, but if it was something the district wanted to do, we could pursue that. We'll, you know, nowadays, every search is an intergalactic search. So anybody in, you know, Connecticut or New York or Massachusetts or wherever, if they're interested in a superintendent position in Washington State, about two clicks gets them to our position announcement. So that's something we can you can think about. We can talk about it. It costs five or $600. It would be in addition to our current level of compensation. It's just a an option, something to think about, not something we're recommending. The other next step would be scheduling the focus groups, and that's probably the biggest activity toward the front end of the of the process. And in doing that, we would need you and the district Selena's lead probably identifying the groups, developing a schedule, working with us on the the format and the content. Typically with the focus groups, we, Mark and I would be on Zoom most likely. And we typically ask three questions. What's going well in the district? What might be your concerns? And what are the attributes and characteristics you're looking for in the next superintendent? And then we put that information together in a summary form and present that to the board a week or so after the focus group. So we'd like to do the the focus groups. We penciled in November sixteen and seventeen. Nothing magic about those dates, but right around in that general timeframe before Thanksgiving and then come back shortly thereafter and give you a report that basically said, this is what your stakeholders are saying. We know that there'll be a lot of interest in that. We we were hesitant about doing focus groups remotely, but after doing several searches last year where our focus scripts were done that way, we found that the participation is greatly increased. Some people might question the quality, just like you find in your meetings and your interaction. But in terms of sheer numbers and voice into the process, the the remote format works extremely well, and we probably would suggest going with that or some combination of of remote for some groups, like perhaps your cabinet or, you know, smaller groups where distance and access is not a a concern. And then remote for larger groups. So we can we can work on that on that as well with with your staff and and whoever you want to have involved in that. And then after the focus groups, we use that information. Oh, excuse me. I'll let me back up. Another step that would happen fairly early is the the development, no, not the development, the posting of an online survey so that stakeholders, community members, staff, students can if they choose not to participate in the focus group or if they want a different format for providing input, they can make access the the online survey. We can get that up and running. What we typically do is we show the district the survey that we have. And if the district wants to do something else, we're open to that. It's a fairly simple process. And ours is pretty generic, as you can well imagine, because we work with lots of districts, but it seems to work. And it's been successful. Some, a few times districts have chose to do something else, and that and that's perfectly fine with us, and we can work with your staff and and get that figured out. But those those aspects, those activities are the are the upfront. Get it posted on Wassa and Wasda, possibly AAS. Get the focus group scheduled, get the online survey up. Usually, and Selena knows this, you would dedicate a page on your website where people could get information about the search, and that's where they could access the online survey. That's where they would see the schedule for the focus groups. That's perhaps that's where they could get a link to to being a participant in the focus group. And other information relative to the search would be available on on your district website. As soon as we work with your staff and get you to approve the timeline, and we by late October, mid-October, we'd like to have the board sign off on the approval of the timeline. So a couple of interactions with staff and maybe a reading to the board, and if you want us, Mark and me to come back and walk through that timeline more formally and at a board meeting so that your community gets to see it and see where they'll be involved. We're we're definitely open to do that through this this session, just kind of to get us started. Position to be posted, you know, early on would be open for quite a while. We come back. It kind of sets after it's posted. And you kind of wonder what's going on. And from your perspective, not too much is going on. From our perspective, a lot is going on. After the position is posted, we reach out to candidates and do our targeted recruiting. We hear from candidates that see the posting and they contact us. We're quite aggressive in terms of our of our recruiting, and that's what we'll be doing January and February. We've actually had some contacts from potential candidates already. That people know that you have an interim, and they know the position's going to be posted, and they know that we're doing the search. So the it's out there informally, and it'll be out there formally very soon. We come back and we have January twenty fifth. We come back late January and give you a mid-search report. And that's an opportunity for us to tell you what kind of interest we're getting and who we're hearing, not who we're hearing, how many people we're hearing from, what their backgrounds are like. We tell the candidates that their application to the process is confidential until way down the road when the board announces the schedule for the semifinalist interviews. So that way, the candidates have a lot of time to think about it. They have some internal communications that they have to take care of, and they don't want their name out there too soon. And they might decide not to follow through with the application. So when we give you the mid-search report, we'll tell you, we think we're gonna have twenty applicants. We know from four or five in-state superintendents that they're interested. We have some out-of-state people that are we're talking to. Give you a general idea of what it's what the pool applicant pool is going to look like. And we also do take that opportunity to discuss the semifinalist interviews and the finalist interviews. We start talking about interview questions. We talk about the format whether it's going to be remote, whether it's going to be in person. All of those details we can work out late January and get it ready for February and March, February closing and then March interviews. We recommend two rounds of interviews, and we've identified a Saturday in March, March eighth. The Saturday works well for the candidates, obviously, because they're not at work. And it's it's nice to do them in one day where you interview maybe six people or so. Could be five, could be seven. And we've done those in person, and we've done them remotely. So that's something for us to talk about. The remote option takes the concern about number of people in the room and that kind of thing off the table. Doesn't quite give you the same setting. Recently, we did one where the board and the semifinalists were in the room along with a couple of other staff members. But the audience was in an adjacent room in the building, or they were observing the process on Zoom. What we like to see is the board doing those semifinalist interviews in some variation of a public setting and then an opportunity for observers to the process to provide input on what they saw and what they heard. Not necessarily voting along with the board, but providing, you know, well-informed input to the process. And then after the last interview, the board goes into executive session and deliberates, debriefs, selects their finalists for the final round of interview, which we have scheduled for March twenty one, twenty three, and twenty four. I think Tuesday, I think that's a Monday, Tuesday, Thursday. Your board meetings are on Wednesdays. So I think Mark skipped that date. You had a board meeting.
Meetings. Board meetings are on Tuesday, last Tuesday of the month.
Well, maybe I've got that. Maybe I've got that wrong. Anyway, we've got plenty of time to figure that out. That's right. I saw that off your website tonight. I stand corrected. But anyway, we like to see three finalists invited into the district, one finalist per day, spending a full day in the district, meeting with various stakeholder groups in little forums where can't the the participants get an opportunity to interact with the candidate. Some of those might have to be on Zoom, depending on what's going on in March of twenty twenty two. But either way, we've done it both ways, and we can make we can make that work. And that's an opportunity for some real in greater depth, interaction between stakeholder groups and and the candidates, the three finalists. And then we recommend an executive session interview with the candidates with just the board candidates, probably Mark and myself, Mark Ben and myself in the room. Where's an opportunity for the board to interact face-to-face executive session? More of a pre-flowing interview setting. That's basically the last look the board has at the candidates before their final deliberation and their final selection and then the announcement. Typically, what happens with the finalist interviews, the last interview wraps up about nine o'clock at night, maybe ten o'clock at night, and then the board deliberates after that. They might continue those deliberations to the following day. So we suggest a special board meeting after the third round of interviews where the board can come out in open session and and with a roll call vote, make the announcement as to the next superintendent. By then, we will have conducted a third-party background check. We will have pre-negotiated the contract within your parameters, and you'll be ready to make your appointment of your next superintendent at your next regular business meeting, probably at the end of March. And then the new superintendent starts on July one. So that that's kind of the timeline. That's kind of the process that we envision. All of those steps are, you know, can be adjusted if if maybe if you have another something that you'd like to see in the process. The signature, I think, of our searches, and I think Selena would back this up, is a lot of participation, a lot of transparency, a lot of input for the board, but the board retaining control of the process and definitely control of the appointment and the announcement. We think you're going to get a strong field of applicants. You're going to have a tough time selecting your semifinalists and hopefully a very tough time selecting your finalists, and you're going to get somebody that's a good fit to take your district to the next level for the next several years. Questions about any of that timeline process, maybe next steps, I guess, if you wanted us to go?
It's it's a pretty packed timeline, for sure. I'm just wondering if there are anything that whether we can have any October or late October, if there's any reason to try and look at that, just so November's not so. I don't know.
I was looking at that this afternoon in preparation for the meeting. I think we can we can maybe make some adjustments around that. I think if if Selena could get some input from the, you know, from superintendent and from the board members, and then she and I can talk in the next few days, we can see what we want to do and maybe get you another timeline that matches up with some of your dates a little better than our prediction of what your dates might be. Would that would that work for you?
Wayne, as we go into that discussion, I can only compare it to my experience with Mount Vernon, but in your experience with working with other districts, what would you say our our timeline compares to others as far as I know? I know, you know, just like any any district who wanted to ensure a quality pool of candidates, would you say we're early or later on in the search process comparing to other districts?
What we found is being too early is worse than being too late. We've filled positions in April and done just fine, and we've had a couple of searches where I mean, it it makes sense to think that earlier you get out, the better off you're going to be. But there are a lot of candidates that aren't ready to to jump in the pool too early, and they don't want to be if they're if they're going through the process, they don't want that long window where they're out there and all the turmoil that creates in their districts. And so they they just hold back and and don't bite. And there's also the the timeline of districts running levees in February, and they sometimes superintendents don't want to make decisions or announcements of something like this prior to the an election in their district. So we think this is a good timeline. It's it's not too early, and it's definitely not too late. You're going to have your your superintendent position filled right around spring break. It gives you time for some transition activities. So I think it's a good it's a good timeline. We wouldn't want to we we wouldn't want to move the closing date up much. We can move some of the internal activities around a little bit if there's some things some things going on in the district that we might not know about that you want to avoid. I think we can we can fine tune that a little bit and get it to where you want it to be. But I don't think we want to move the end of the process up too much. Maybe, I mean, not more than a week or so and get out in front of the candidate pool. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Can you can you talk about what it will look like for those final interviews? What does it day? I'm I'm assuming there's three days because we're thinking like three candidates maybe, and each candidate has a day. What will that day in your mind look like?
That's a great question. Thank you. It's a long and grueling day for the candidates, let me tell you. They start about seven thirty or eight o'clock in the morning, and they're usually greeted by somebody from the district. It could be Selena. It could be your interim superintendent. It could be a board representative, and Mark and I will be there. And then we get them started. We go over the day's schedule. They will have already seen the schedule. So there's no surprises there, but we want to make sure that everybody's locked into what the schedule's going to be. Typically, as you imagined and said, they go through a schedule of of short thirty-minute, forty-five-minute meetings with district staff, cabinet, principals. Typically, in the middle of the day, there's a there there might be an opportunity to tour a couple of schools, maybe a meeting with with students at the high school, something like that, to get them kind of out in the district a little bit. Sometime with the outgoing superintendent. And then afternoon session, sometime there's a community meeting there and they like at one o'clock or something like that, depending on, you know, we've done with rotary meetings. We've we've done with senior center visits. We've done all kinds of different things. So if there's some particular group that you want to slide in there that early afternoon, and the the best time to meet with the staff we find is secondary staff probably has a dismissal around two fifteen or two thirty or something like that. So give them about fifteen minutes and then have a session for secondary staff, take about a half hour, forty-five minutes, and then about three thirty or four o'clock, whatever the dismissal times were, a session for elementary staff. And then you don't want to forget classified staff. Something seems like to us around nine o'clock in the morning is a good time to hit the transportation department as they're coming in from their morning run. So, you know, it all depends on how things are, what the logistics are in the district. But you're right. It's just a series of meetings. And at each of those meetings, the candidate makes five-minute opening remarks, and then it's just questions from the group. Because the cabinet questions for each of the candidates are going to be way different than the elementary teachers' questions and the transportation department questions are going to be way different. And this is a chance for each of those groups to envision, how would this person be as our next superintendent? How would that affect me? How would it affect my department? How would that all play out? And then at every one of those stations, there's a way for them to provide input into the process, either electronically or old-school with paper pencil, kind of depending on how we set it up, or a combination thereof. And then all of that information comes together. And then, oh, excuse me. And then after that that meeting with probably elementary staff, short break maybe, and then we recommend a very casual informal meeting with the candidate and two board members. Not five, because you don't want to have it be a a regular board meeting, but then a rotation of two board members. So over the three days, each of the board members gets to have dinner with somebody, but probably nobody has dinner with all three of them. And then after that, then a six o'clock community forum, possibly remote, possibly in person, possibly a combination thereof, where it's the same kind of thing. The candidate makes opening remarks, and then it's questions from the community members. That's also an opportunity for anybody who couldn't participate during the day at their scheduled plan. They can they can weigh in on that six o'clock meeting. And then a short, very short break, and then a seven thirty or so executive session interview with the board, maybe forty-five minutes. Whereas the preliminary interview is very structured with every candidate getting the same question. The executive session interview with the board is more of a conversation, because you might have one candidate who has never been a superintendent. You might have one candidate that's been a superintendent in Washington, and you might have another candidate from out of state. So you might have different questions. So you might have different questions with the different candidates, talking about their transition, talking about where they're going to live, you know, any of that kind of stuff. Could could very greatly. So that's, that's, that's the final step. And then. At the end of that, you know, candidate number one leaves, candidate number two comes in the next morning, do the same thing. So the time commitment from the board is really that five o'clock session. With for two board members for dinner. And then we we recommend that the that the board members observe. The community forum so they can see how the candidates interact with the community. And then, of course, the executive session interview three nights in a row. And then. We suggest the candidate, the the board does not deliberate each night, maybe a short debrief. To make sure everybody's on the same page and heard the same thing, that kind of thing. But until you've seen all three candidates, you don't want to start forming your opinions too much. Kind of hard not to, but. But save the deliberations, the real serious deliberations for after you've seen all three candidates. You've got all the input on all three candidates from all these sources. And then you've got a lengthy deliberation on the night after the third interview. Which can sometimes carry over into the next morning and then a special board meeting to make the announcement after. Did that, did that help?
Dr. Robertson, I have a question on all of those meetings during the day, the interviews with the school staff. How do we as a board get that information before we do our deliberations? Do you put it in a report or does Selena? How does that happen?
We've done it, we've done it a couple of different ways and as as time has gone on, it's gotten more sophisticated. Where the last couple of searches we did last year, people used a Google product. To to basically, Selena, did we do this in Mount Vernon?
No, we did actually.
Yeah, I think, but I think when we went from Mount Vernon to Seidron Wully, we picked up a way for them to do it electronically. And then when we went to Stanwood, we even fine tuned it a little more. So there's a Google product that people can. Sit through their session and then go right online and register their their input, their comments. So at the end of the day, then you get a spreadsheet on that particular candidate. It's anonymous for the participants, of course, and tells you know what, whether they're a principal or a teacher. And it tells what their comments were with respect to each of the three guiding questions for the process. So that comes around pretty fast. Particularly on the third day. Some people like to wait and do their input after they've seen all three candidates, which is. And understandable, slows the process down a little bit, but it does all come together. Before you're doing your deliberations after the last round. What you have to have, you have to have some time, obviously. So some of the input you can read as you go, you can get as you go. And then some of it comes in at the last minute, particularly on on the third candidate. So you have to, after your last interview with the third candidate, you have to allow some time for you to catch up on that. And then go into your deliberations with all that input. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I was, I was just hoping that before we interviewed them in the evening, we would have some idea of how their day went. The rest and. The things that might be, to see like themes that came up and.
Yeah, yeah. And and one of the questions that that boards often ask during that last interview was. How was your day? You know, what, any surprises? You know, how did it go? What did you think? And yeah, you can, to the extent that people fill out their that online survey right after their session or shortly after that session. You would have that information prior to your interview with. For your executive session interview. Yeah, we can make, we can make that happen to the degree that they fill out the survey. Other questions about the last day, the final day? Okay, in the interest of time, I think I'm going to go back to to a couple of talking points off the agenda that I sent. And pick up a couple of things that we haven't probably covered. If that's okay, Andrew?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, so I mentioned the brochure. So we will start working right as we're doing the focus groups. And we'll start drafting the brochure, getting pictures from Selena. We'll have a session during the focus groups where we'll have some kind of time with each board member. And we can get your take on what the characteristics and the qualifications you're most interested in. So we can have a pretty good draft of the brochure ready to go as. As we're wrapping up the focus groups. So there's not a, we're not starting at square one after the focus groups and then getting going on it. We'll get information about your district, about the community. Any information that you want included in that brochure, we'll be working on that kind of as we go. That process will start. Fairly soon and you'll get an opportunity to look that brochure over before it goes out. It doesn't go out until you say it's ready to go out. And so that's a pretty important piece of the process. One of the things you'll need to think about and we'll ask you probably when we have that individual time. Is some characteristics and qualifications. So it says residency, you want them to live in the district. Most districts do. But we'll want to make sure, we'll want to verify that if that's a requirement or is it a desired characteristic and. Conversation about that. We'll want to get from you, do you want somebody with superintendent experience? And is that a requirement or is it a desired characteristic? You want them to have a doctorate or you care about that, that sort of thing. So we'll want to, we'll want to get that into the process, some of our conversations along the way. I talked a little bit about recruiting. If there's a candidate that you think. You're interested in and you want us to know about and that we might be, we probably know about them, but we might not. And surface their name and we'll follow up with them. We don't want to leave any stones unturned. And we're not bashful about reaching out to potential candidates. I mentioned that as we wrap up the process, we pre negotiate the contract with your, within your parameters. What we like to have districts do is start fairly soon. And if you haven't done this, if you have done it, great or good for you. If you haven't done it, it's a good time. To review the superintendent contract and if if there's some. Items in there that you don't want to carry forward, this is a good time to clean that up. If there's some things in there you've been wondering about that maybe should be added, this is a good time to do that. The educational service service district has been known, I can't really speak for them. But they've been known to do pretty good salary analyses for their member districts. If that, that's a correct request you might want to think about making. Your superintendent Mark could talk with Larry Francois about that and see if that's an option. We do, we can do a salary comparison for you. Ours is not as sophisticated. We don't have access to some of the same information and we don't have quite the. Force power, the bandwidth that the educational service district does. We're doing that kind of work. But we can get you a a salary comparison that'll get you pretty close to what the market is. In Washington state for districts your size in Western Washington and that sort of thing. That's something we can, we can talk with the staff about and see if you want us to do that. I mentioned a third party background check. Once the finalists are selected. We can Northwest Leadership Associates contracts with the firm in Spokane. And they run a third party background check on each of your finalists that looks into their financial picture. Their legal criminal background, which should be okay, I hope. And also the the thing that they do is very important is they. They verify their academic credentials. So if the person says they have a doctorate from. From out of state university that we've never heard of, they'll verify that 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 university exists and it's accredited and. Indeed, the person does have a doctorate. So that gives you another layer of of security and insulation. Complete the process. Media and communication, you've got a great communication person and we're looking forward to working with her. And she knows the drill and and is very effective in in guiding the communication aspects and. And particularly with your Latinx community, which was a, as you can imagine, a big deal in the Mount Vernon School District and. She taught us a lot as we went through that search. We've refined a couple of things. Selena and and are working on changing our online survey for the Latinx population group and. And we'll look forward to working with you on that. We're willing to take whatever role you want us to do with the media. You know, your internal communications are in good hands and your website, it looks great. As a matter of fact, and I'm sure it's just going to get better and there'll be plenty of opportunity to highlight the superintendent search on your website. But we'll play whatever role in that you want us to play. More time commitment on the search. We want to minimize your time. We know you're busy and you've got a lot of other board work to do. Other than detail work on the search. So we we're inclined to work primarily with staff, maybe board president and staff. But we're open to taking questions from individual board members. You have or Selena has our contact information. One of us is virtually always available and and we're open to meeting face to face if that's what. You prefer. This is nice and it's handy. It's pretty easy for us. In some ways, it's it's a better and safer and smarter. But we're open to whatever format meets your needs and. And and support you in any way that we possibly can. We want to minimize the board's time and but not leave you out of the loop. So I think we're pretty good communicators, working back through your district contact person and district staff and. And the board president, you know, however you choose us to do that. I've covered what I thought we needed to cover and hopefully answered your questions. Any more questions, I'd be happy to. Do that and if you're ready to sign me off and get on with the rest of your agenda.
One quick question. I know you've mentioned as far as meeting with the board individually and some questions you'll have. Is it possible to get those questions ahead of time just so we have some time to put a little more thought into? You know, because you were talking about qualifications and I would like to think about that as opposed to just being.
Yeah, maybe, maybe I wasn't very clear on that. All we're looking for is what are you looking for in the next superintendent? And and the residency thing, we'll just ask you that, you know, you can be thinking about that. Doctorate, you can be thinking about that. Really, it's, it's, it's more of a open ended kind of process. But I can provide you anything, I can provide some talking points if you'd like. Or we can flush that out. It can be telephone, it can be remote, it can be in person if we're in the district that day or a combination of all those things. Does that help?
That does. Thank you. So in regards to the background checks that you do. Once we select our three finalists, the background check is done. Do we have those results before we go public with our finalists?
Yeah, yeah, I think it's just about two days to turn those around and. And we just get a verbal report from Dennis Ray that says we've heard back from Fennecal Investigators. And John Smith, background check cleared, fine. And and then we just share that information with you. They're hesitant to write a report. But we get the loop closed so that we know that you've got that information going forward. But yeah, we we want you to have that and we want you to have a verbal assurance from the candidate. That they're good to go on the contract so that you know that if you announce John Smith or Sally Smith. As your next superintendent, that there's not going to be any surprises, both from their background or from hesitation on the contract.
Could we see some samples of brochures? Could you send us some samples of your brochures that you've sent out for other?
I can get, I can get those off to Selena in the morning.
There's some online.
Yeah, you bet. And what what, the thing to remember, two things to remember. If you look at it in a print copy, it looks kind of clunky because the page breaks are weird. When it's, once it's turned into a PDF print, hard copy, online, that's not a problem, of course. The other thing to remember is the audience is the candidate. That's who we want to send it out. When we do our targeted recruiting, we send them a copy of the brochure and we send them a. It's our application form, but it says Ferndale School District at the top of it. So it's a Ferndale School District application form. And that's what we use, you know, to say so and so, we think you ought to be taking a look at the Ferndale job. It's a great opportunity, blah, blah, blah. So we want them to see in the brochure. What the district's looking for in the next candidate. Sometimes we get kind of bogged down in people thinking it's a. Advertisement for the district and it is to a sense, but to a very limited audience. So, yeah, we can, I'll get you some copies. You can look it over. And you you'll have some great pictures. I've seen pictures on your website of opening school and school construction and. And you'll have, we can do a real nice job. We contract, you don't have to worry about maybe in the page, but in the. Desktop publisher, we contract that out. She does a great job, turns it around fast and you'll get. You can look at it two or three times before you finally sign off on it and it doesn't go out till the board president tells us it's ready to go out. Anything else?
All right. Well, thank you, Dr. Robertson. Thank you, Selena, for helping. We look forward to getting underway and. Getting knee deep in the process.
Okay, I'll circle back through Selena probably in the morning and we'll get a couple of things moving and I'll get copies of the brochures. To you and start talking with her about fine tuning that timeline. Okay?
Thank you.
Good luck with the rest of your meeting. We've got big, weighty agenda items on there. And I appreciate your leadership work. This is a challenging time to be a a member of the school board. Or in a leadership role in a in a school district. So good for you. Thanks a lot.
Like Wayne mentioned, we want to have more time on this process. And so what my role looks like. Communications on behalf of the board. So I was thinking of the timeline. It looks like at least four fresh releases will come out of my office on behalf of the school board. And that will typically go out to, we can discuss the local heralds, some local newspapers. Included back in Mount Vernon as well as the Chamber of Commerce and anyone else we think is appropriate. It'll also look like to me, internally, the email with. The different union leaders communicating regularly with them to provide. The different opportunities for for their members to be involved in the process. On opportunity for participation. And if you have any other questions for me. My role in this, I'm really excited to be doing this again. It is. A long process. It's exhausting, but it's so fun and it's exciting.
Well, we're excited to have you. I'm so glad you're excited. We're really excited to have you.
So can I ask an awkward question?
Sure.
So I'm I'm looking at this timeline and like I said, this is kind of awkward. But I'm just, I want to throw it out to see if there's anything we should do. But in my mind, selecting the new superintendent is probably. One of, if not the biggest roles of the board and things that we need to do. And right in the middle of this timeline is the November election. And I I don't want to be, I don't know what I want to be, this is where it gets awkward. But both two of our senior, more senior seasoned board members who've been through this process are up for election. And if.
This year?
This year.
Oh, yeah.
Did you, I can talk to you about it later. But it is, you know, dependent on what happens with that election. How do we maintain? How do we maintain the the continuity? Thank you. Yeah. And the flow of this? And and I don't know if maybe that was a question I should have asked when Dr. Robertson was on. But it like I said, it's kind of awkward. I wasn't sure how to bring it up or how to, you know, because you guys have at least been through the process. I mean, I was around, I was in the studio audience when Linda was interviewed. But you know, it wasn't there at the process. And frankly, we have Selena who's been through it, you know, which I'm very grateful for that because experience is a great teacher. But, you know, I was thinking, do we? And again, this is where it gets awkward and I don't want it to be awkward, but I'm just trying to throw it out for discussion. Do we invite those other candidates to be here in the open sessions, just to hear what's going on? Because I would, you know, hate to all of a sudden have somebody new two people new on the board that haven't been through this process at all or aren't aware of what's going on or is that their responsibility or?
I would hope that as somebody running for school board, you're aware of what's going on.
Yeah.
I think I think it might be our communication team to let them know about it. But I think if a candidate for school board knows it's going on and chooses not to pay attention, that might be something for, you know, consideration.
Well, the the real fact of it is, we're just, based on this timeline, we really will just be getting into into the process when the election occurs.
What is the election date?
The November is the second Tuesday.
November?
Yeah.
First. First.
First, yeah, first.
February is the second.
Yeah. November second.
So I mean, that much that's happened other than our opinion of what we're looking for. Some of that they may have to come in and be okay with. I don't know how far that might be.
Yeah.
For instance, but I I think if the candidates won't participate, they'll
Tune in. Yeah.
And those candidates would be sworn in at the end of November. It's not like, you know, January 20th and on duration day type of thing. So there, if if there is a change in leadership during that time, it's only up until the position being posted on the website or that they wouldn't have a
Right.
A role in, I guess.
They don't get their ideas in the brochure.
No.
But you know, that's, they're gonna have plenty of other opportunities.
Right. Yeah. Well, I would I would echo and agree with what Melinda says. I mean, if they truly want to be involved, you know, there's plenty of open public, you know. There's maybe none of them that they can turn.
And that goes the same for any person wanting to be involved, whether they're running for school board or not. We have a lot of opportunity for the public or staff or whoever to be involved and pay attention to.
And and once finalized this, some version of this will be published, not every internal date. Dates when people.
Yeah.
I didn't think that was awkward at all, so.
Okay, good. I just think that way.
It's a valid discussion.
The and I guess the one thing that I would echo with you moving on is that I'm wondering that November 16th and 17th is like right before the wasda. I'm almost wondering if the week before would be a little bit better for the focus groups, although there's some holidays in November that looking at the calendar.
Well, that's why I asked about. It seems like we're kind of letting October.
Well, we did do work.
For community groups, I mean, to to gather information about opinions and stuff. There's no downside to doing some of that in October. I mean, obviously, we won't have candidates for sure, so but we can at least get opinions.
Well, it looks like you had the board approving the search plan and timeline for our October business meeting. So we would have to do that in the September business meeting.
Sure.
Or a special meeting in October. I just hate to have November suddenly start this crammed two months leading up to, you know, both Thanksgiving and Christmas and trying to get things ready for January. And we've had time in October where we could also be talking to groups. And if we need to approve a plan, we can certainly forward. I don't think that's a problem. But I would like to see us have broader opportunities, maybe in October for the community. That rather than risk losing some people because other things are happening in November.
Well, particularly if we do it in October and, you know, we do it via hybrid or Zoom or whatever, and we find, okay, that didn't really work well. We didn't get the participation. We've still got some time to regroup, regroup and do something else. Whereas if we do it in November, then it goes into that holiday time. You know, they've got other things going on. So I I would, and in my mind, I don't think community, community input, October versus November is not going to be like it's not going to change significantly. So I would give more for moving that time.
Yeah.
Pushing a bit forward. I like the rest.
We'll let you work on things for October. And if if we need to approve the plan formally, then we could possibly do it at the end of this month.
How many focus groups did they do in Mount Vernon? Do you remember?
I believe it was three. It was an evening one with community members. And I know they provided, I believe, three different groups based on the language spoken. And then daytime one for staff member.
So the evening one was actually like three small classrooms?
Okay.
So small simultaneous or?
Yeah, so it may have been two because I know they split up to facilitate.
Yeah, I I agree, Kevin. At least I I like the idea of doing it earlier in case we find, wow, we just didn't get the turnout we wanted and then we need to regroup and work in another one. We've got a little bit of time if we started in October. Because we we've said this before as a board, we want to be sure that our it's like they've had ample opportunities to participate. And and one evening meeting might not be enough really to capture the opinions that we want to get.
And what does did their focus groups look like? How did they run them?
It was a room like this and Wayne and Mark facilitated with the three questions he shared. And I sat somewhere in there taking notes on the community members' response.
And so then the survey, though, also feed into that, right? So if someone doesn't want to come to a focus group
Right.
Or go online to a focus group where they're, they don't feel like their voice, they've got a place there, they can do the survey.
Right.
Sounds good.
All right. Thank you all.
Appreciate your work on this.
Yeah.
Next item on the agenda, 3.02, it's a report on the way the administration of the district will be managed during the next nine months before the new superintendent. Final day is rapidly approaching. But we're not backfilling Mark's position as he's assistant superintendent of business and sports services. And he'll return to that position when he's selected. But in interim, others are going to be picking up some of his work. He will still be doing some of that work. We made this decision because of our confidence in the current executive team and the direction they're giving to the district. However, it means that for nine months, four leaders, Mark, John, Kelly and Fay, will be taking over the responsibilities that five leaders are currently doing. Or remaining executives will be absorbing Dr. Quinn's responsibilities. So the executive team has done a lot of planning for this transition. And are and they want to ensure that all critical functions are covered and the level of district support for students, staff and families is not diminished. We've hired several new administrators to assist them in this work. However, it would be unfair of us to expect everything to remain exactly as it stands. Dr. Quinn and the other members of the executive team have traditionally worked 50, 60, sometimes 70 hours per week. So it's not just a matter of putting in more time. So we asked for this on this agenda item, so we could get a better sense of the details of the plan our executives have developed for a nine-month transition. So at this point, I'm gonna call on Dr. Quinn and Mr. Dibok to present the plan.
And I'll start, Andrew. You both have two, I mean, you all have two pieces of paper in front of you. One was last year, I believe, this has five columns. And I'm gonna tell you that we didn't spend as much time on that one last year. Put it together and we organized it, but we we've spent a little more time on one of this year so that it's a little more comprehensive. I'm not gonna go through all of it, but I want you to see that there is a plan. And if you flip over the one that says, it still says draft on it, and I've already, I thought you would say. But we I'm gonna, I'll start on the front page. So everyone who's listed under those columns, the way you get on this list is you are either a district administrator or you work in the district office. Or you don't have a home and you're evaluated by a district administrator. You're an itinerant worker, like our texts are gonna be put on. So it it gives you an idea of who's evaluating who. Kelly has the most evaluations because she has five nurses, but that she evaluates. And but and and it also shows you how many district administrators we're gonna have. And since people are always interested in that number, we had 29 before the levy. We went to 22. When I leave, there'll be 27. So and then when the new superintendent comes, if that's an add, there'll be 28. So we're still one fewer than we had before the levy. And one of those new administrators is Martina, who's doing technology. And that's really a trade-out for a much more expensive model than we had previously. So so that's the people in blue. So if you turn it over, you'll see that John's the only one who doesn't have any other administrative staff working directly for him. Everybody else has other administrators that are working for them. And five of those, six of those administrators are actually central administrators. They're not tied to a building. Most of those are under Mark's name, four of the six. And so you can see that even though Mark, Mark is gonna have my he's gonna have the general oversight. He's not gonna take on all of the work that I've been doing. We've split that out and we backfilled some of it. We've enhanced both Holly and Jamie's position. They've been with us, but we've enhanced, given them an enhancement. And they're taking over some of that work. Jamie's big new add is he's taking over transportation. And he's also stepping up to work with the bond project. Holly is going to be doing some of Mark's current, well, she's doing nutrition services. So both Holly and and Jamie have another department they're running. But and then Martina and Selena are the other two new administrators. Selena is taking up, is going to be taking up a share of my work as, well, my work in the last year, since we haven't had a communications team. But if you, you'll have a chance to go through this, not everything from my list, but directly to Mark's list. For instance, Kelly is taking over the district improvement plan, which has been on my last list. Fay is taking over the oversight of governance policies. And and so with all that said, I think we've thought through everything. But but I I want to reiterate what Andrew said. I think it would be unfair to expect that everything's going to be the same. What we've used as a screen is how do we maintain our service to students, staff and families? I'm just gonna be perfectly blunt. We haven't used as a screen, how do we maintain our current level of service to the school board? You know, I mean, you know, so there may not be it's not that we're not gonna communicate with you, but it may not be the same. I'm not sure if the governance policies will, there may need to take some laps in some of those. I'm gonna say, because I'm leaving, I just don't think you can ask the four executives to do a lot of extra reports. Or, you know, I I I think you're gonna have your hands full with your superintendent's search. I think we feel really confident that we can continue to keep going in the direction we're going. But there isn't gonna be time to take on. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
But I think it, I guess, Mark, what do you want to add? What are you gonna take away? The big things that are going to, Mark, and they're huge things is, you know, he, the first thing on his list is oversight of businesses, sports services. He's taking over the executive team, liaison with the school board, district opposite operations and administrative policies. A lot of the rest of this, and when he and I have talked, he cannot give up the bond project. He cannot give that up. The rest of the team is going to have to absorb. You remember when we started the bond projects, the the steering committee was Scott, Britton, Linda Quinn, Jeremy Vincent and Mark Dibok.
Mark, you're the last man standing.
And and there is a whole bunch of institutional knowledge. We were working really hard to get Jamie and Erica to speak, but he cannot back away from that work. So that has to stay. He and I have been doing it together, but he's been doing the lion's share of of the actual construction piece of it. And so but some of the other things, like I said, and it may be the governance policies, it may be whatever, may have to take a backseat for a little bit to some of some of the ser- the service to our director. But so what are your questions? And and if, you know, I I also want to make sure, you know, we all look, obviously, like who has the longest line and everything. But please know, these are not equal little cells on here. You know, these are not John's box there with COVID lead administrator should be, if it were proportionate to the size of the work, should be about three pages long. I mean, and so they just aren't. But but it's our best effort to, we we've really tried to think through everything. Kelly, John, any addition? You know? I I just want to make sure you know that we've given it a lot of thought on how and we brought in new administrators to take to backfill. So.
I guess I would ask you guys, you guys, that if we do ask for something that like puts you over the edge or is like, there's no way in heck, please tell us, please just say it. I know in theory, we're gonna be Mark's boss. And sometimes it's hard to push back against who your boss is. But we don't, do not know what your day-to-day life is like. And you have to help educate us and you have to tell us, no, this is just, don't even go there. Please, please, please do that.
Yeah, I would ditto that. I mean, we, you know, we're a team. We work together. But we don't see what you guys are doing every day. So be honest with us and say, you know, tell us where things are at and how, you know, we can help with those. Because sometimes we ask for something and we don't realize that, you know, what we think is this is this. And we need you to be honest with us during this interim.
We appreciate that as well. Good. Thank you. And we appreciate the willingness of the executive to take this on for nine months. We're going to do our best to get another superintendent in here on July one, so Mark's hair doesn't look like mine.
Or Kevin's, but mine.
So, but we do appreciate it, and we know it's going to be a tough nine months, and so.
But, but we're, I think.
We, we know you're geared up for it.
I know, I, I'm just thinking, I still believe it's a better plan than bringing in someone who we, they would have had to spend their time trying to get somebody else to know how to tell them what to, I, so I still think it was the best choice, and I think we, you agree that it, maybe not Mark.
I'll tell you, six months from now.
I read now.
Now, it'll only be three months more.
Yeah, tonight's night, you start to say, oh, yes.
Bring it on.
But, okay, but that's so weird.
Thank you, Kay.
Yeah. We do, we do too, even though we keep looking over there.
She's not here because she's not feeling well.
No, she made the right choice.
Yeah, so.
Hi, I have a question before we end this topic. I see that, that you have the relationship with Elimination under yours. And, and it's moved away from Mark's. He's not doing that no more, and who is doing the MOA or the MOU with the tribe?
Well, that, that will be with Fay, and, and Fay has been with me all year. Heather's also been helping, but Heather isn't on this sheet, well, she is, but but it doesn't, it doesn't make sense for Mark in the next nine months to spend a lot of time building those relationships. It, it needs to go back to the new superintendent when the new superintendent comes, because it's an important relationship. But knowing that we were going to make this transition, Fay and Heather and I have been doing most of that work in collaboration all year, so that Fay is already taking over, working with the native advisors. Fay and Heather and I have been involved with like JOM, you know, those types. So, so it'll be Fay.
Okay, so the next meeting that we have, you have with JOM, will you be able to explain that, your?
Yeah, I, I, yes. Let's not forget to do that.
I'm sure they're going to want to know, you know, since Mark is now the superintendent interim, what the reason is for that change.
And, and you know, it, it wasn't the superintendent before. It was Jill for a long time. You know, it was just, I took it over when we eliminated a position. I've always been closely involved. But I, I will, I will tell JOM when, at our next meeting, but I'll also, I talk to Alexandria almost every day, so I'll make sure.
But I'm sure the parents want to know.
Yeah, sure. Good point.
And the other thing that I, that I noticed is the elementary level curriculum. And the secondary level curriculum, does STI fall under either of those?
Both of them.
That should be spelled out right here.
Oh, we don't spell out.
I know you don't, but it should be noted.
Okay. Okay, anything else?
And when, when does this change over to Mark?
October one.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, well, thank you again. We continue to look forward to working with you guys. All right, then the next item on the agenda, six point oh one, is a discussion of the since-time memorial curriculum and the possibility of sketching a presentation for the board by the new director of the Office of Native Education at OSPI. Jesse requested that we put this item on the agenda because she wants to share some of her learnings from a recent Washington State Indian Education Association conference that she attended. So at this time, I'm going to turn the floor over to Jesse.
Okay. The, the conference I went to was really informative. And I, I thank you for making that recommendation. That was good. I had a chance to meet with Dr. Laura Lynn from OSPI, who does the STI curriculum. She said she would love to do a recaster with the board, which would, you know, consist of training, like training. I would hope we could do it the next work session, because I think sooner the better. When I got on the board, I had no idea about STIs. And I didn't know a lot of, I had to do a lot of research. But I believe in twenty fifteen, right, it was passed under Senate Bill five, four, three, three, and it became law to have STI in all Washington State schools from elementary to middle school to high school, not just one classroom, but all of them. And that is to help schools learn about our tribe, the reservation, the surrounding reservations, and the XAC as well. It's not just for native kids, it's for all kids. So once I got into the conference, I got to see other schools that used it and how they used it. And it was kids for them to explore, you know, outdoors. I guess Bellingham's used it. Some of their classes took kids out on a boat, you know, to go learn about surrounding area. There's a lot of things that could be done. And then I found out the tribe also has the opportunity to have funding to help with resources for the schools. So the money is there. All we need to do is tap into it. They, they wanted, yeah, like I said, for a lot of the classes in every level, so they have benchmarks. I think I sent you the copy of the benchmark, but Dr. Laura Lynn, she will update on this with that. And yeah, that's pretty much what I got out of it. And then it was, it is now required. It is not just recommended. And my question is, what is the difference between mandate and law? Because this is now law. It's not mandated.
Yeah. Can't speak to that at this point.
I, I mean, I'm just putting it out there.
Do you remember what the, the training would look like? I'm all, I'm all for it. I got, I was lucky enough to get to go, I can't remember what that was.
It was, it was right about the time, it was actually before it went from a recommendation to a law. And, and I put that in the report that I wrote to you a few months ago, that you, as a board, did a resolution to start teaching it before it became a law. And it did become a law in two thousand fifteen, but this board had already passed it as a local law.
So I think we went to that training.
We, you and I, yeah, you and I went, it was out at the casino. Yeah.
And it is, they, I don't know how she's going to do it, but it gives you like this overview of the resources that are there, which are incredible to pull from. So I would be excited. Do you have info what that would look like? It could look at that on the, in the website, too. They have all kinds of resources. You know, what we could do, the curriculum, all that type of stuff.
Yes, we're doing some.
Like I said, it's not just for native kids, for all kids. That's going to be really interesting.
I have a question to, to Kelly and to Fay, and then with a follow-up to you, Jesse, is what are we doing now? And then Jesse, what, what more do we need to do, like specifically?
Well, the way I look at it is now the elementary is doing something, right? I don't know. Maybe if Kelly and Fay can tell us what we are doing.
Okay, I see Fay just was giving, go ahead Fay, if you want to start.
Oh, okay. No problem. A lot of, Jesse, if you remember in the report that we put together a few months ago, a lot of, we outlined a lot of what was happening at each grade level. We do a lot, particularly in middle school, at seventh grade, with the whole semester on Pacific Northwest history. So that's where a significant amount of our STI curriculum is taught at the middle level. And then it's entwined in different parts of social studies classes throughout middle and high school.
Thank you, Fay. At the elementary level, as like Fay said, we kind of, we outline it, but I would say it's not, we're not as tightly aligned at every grade level. We're going off the recommendations that we find on OSPI, but in terms of specific curriculum we are using throughout the district, we are not aligned on that. We are using our guidance from the state, but we are still trying to be better started to find in what, what resources we are using to implement within the classroom.
So it depends on which classroom they're in or which school they're at. It's very.
Our grade levels are, are more and more alike in terms of our collaborative efforts. So a lot of times we are coming together saying, okay, how are we utilizing these resources at this grade level? So we are doing a lot of grade level planning district-wide, but we don't always have the access to the exact same, you know, books or materials or things like that. So we are doing quite a bit of collaboration, but we're just not completely aligned in how the materials we're using, or the resources we're using to present to all of them.
Would you like me to resend the twenty-three-page report I sent you in March? Because I surveyed all of our staff, all of our principals, and asked them what we were doing. And I just found that report. And Heather, I also consulted with Heather. Heather served as a, and maybe you can share a little bit, you served as a liaison with the, with Elimination for a while.
I can speak specifically about our middle schools, just to let you know, Jesse, our middle schools, teachers have done a really incredible job of partnering with Elimination. And part of it is a little bit more, we do a lot more with STI, probably simply because I'm here, and so resources are readily available. But for the last three years, when our Lake Chief was still alive, we, we have done assemblies, and since the COVID, we've done webinar assemblies where we have invited tribal members into our school to speak on behalf of the tribal governance and sovereignty and around Treaty Day. So we've done that sporadically a few times throughout the year with cooperation with Horizon and Vista. The, the barrier is, just with STI in general, is STI has resources available on, online. And then it tells us to partner with our neighboring tribes. So much of what we do as Elimination is an oral tradition. So it's really hard for teachers to find materials and to find resources. We, they do a really good job of piecemealing and, and, and finding things that are public information, but as far as getting like that real in-depth understanding of who we are and where we come from, those, those things come in places like people coming to classrooms, like those kinds of things. So I will tell you that we are doing a far better job than we were five years ago. I will tell you that I have more teachers coming to me throughout the district now. How can I address this and what are some good resources for that? So in the time that I have, I've been able to connect teachers K-12 with resources or people, or this would be a really good person to invite to your classroom and talk about this. But the barrier is, is, is we're oral people. And so we don't always have a lot of things that are in written publication, and things that are in written publication are not necessarily shared with our house-site community. So that, that is just, it is just a struggle. But I will tell you, we, like I said, we are in a far better place than we were before. We're working on the land acknowledgement educational video right now, and that's coming along nicely. We did the Treaty Day video. That was an amazing experience and brought up a lot of awareness, anticipating that the land acknowledgement video will do the same. But what I see is, is, I always feel like I'm talking from two people. So in Ferndale, our friends in Ferndale are asking for that information. They're asking, how do I respectfully teach this? How do I respectfully explain that? And I think, I think that's just huge, huge growing. It's, it's, it's huge growth between our two communities. And we're not anywhere where we should be. We're not anywhere where we can be, but we are going in the right direction. I was meeting with Candace Wilson a couple of weeks ago when we were doing some interviews for the land acknowledgement, and she's super excited about sponsoring picture books. And so we put together a list of some topics of picture books and some artists that she would love to contract out of the Lactamish Foundation, picture books that would go into the classrooms. You can buy a lot of them online, but they're Alaskan natives and Haida, and they're not necessarily specific to us, but she's also working on getting copies of the early literacy books that the Early Learning Center has. Because the Baloo family has published some that they use for their little learners that are head start in our daycare and getting copies of those and getting them to our classrooms in Ferndale. So it's, it's a work in progress. I mean, I hope that I could reassure you that we are, we are doing really great things. We are going in the right direction, and there's just, with anything that we do, that's just, we could always do more, and we will continue to take steps forward and do the best we can.
The, and, and the curriculum resources that are online are great, but they are not easy for our teachers to use. I mean, even the ones that are general for the whole, because there are a lot of resources, but there aren't a lot of lesson plans. So that's what I hear, especially for the littles, you know, that it takes, it's a lot of work. It's beautiful. Primary source and, you know, set resources, but you got to really dig in, and that's why things like the Treaty Day and the land acknowledgement, where Heather has worked with children of the setting center, put together these videos, and then we've been able to build lessons off of them that they can pull in some of these, and we did K-12 lessons for Treaty Day, and that's our, the plan for this as well, right?
Yes.
So it's, what the law says is not that we, there isn't like a, it's not like the ARC curriculum, you know, that comes and stuff. What the law says is that there needs to be lessons taught at every grade level. It doesn't really specify. It's, it says what some of the outcomes will be, but it doesn't specify which lessons. I think we're meeting the outcomes. But like Heather said, we do better.
In efforts to build up our library and our resources, when speakers come to classrooms, is it appropriate to videotape those or to record those, or is that not appropriate?
Well, for example, when Chief, the Lake Chief's the elite king, if his belief is known, so we did not record that. A lot of, a lot of, a lot of things that we share, I'll, I'll say sometimes. So the, the two webinars that we did have, the, the panelists did not want to record. They would rather much come on a second time and share the same information. And it just, it stems from, it stems from, as a young girl growing up in, in a Native American community, my teaching comes when I'm in the my teaching comes when I'm in the longhouse. So when I'm sitting there and I'm listening and I'm observing, like I sit back here and I listen and observe. And, and even when I go like to exec meetings, I listen and observe. I don't say much at the beginning, but that's where you get the teachings. Is when you're sitting here and you're listening to the people that are supposed to be teaching you something. And so when people come and talk, that's kind of, yeah, it's kind of where we're coming from. Is it's not necessarily, we make this recording and then we blast it all over the state so that everybody could have this. So it's kind of like that frame of mind and kind of the cultural teachings in which we were raised and how we teach our children. It's, that's where you get it. So it's kind of, you're in the longhouse and there you get the teaching and if you're not, you don't.
It makes, it makes a lot of sense being from oral tradition, the main way of teaching. But if you have a limited number of people who will, can come to do the teachings, then you have an also limited number of students who get the benefit of it. And I totally agree with you that actually firsthand hearing it is much better than watching a video. But some sort of balance of doing it in a respectful way, a respectful way of the culture, not saying, well, it works for me if I just get it YouTube.
Well, the balance, the balance is the, these videos that we're making with a lot of thought and care in very close collaboration with the Lummy. So those are.
And then, and in those things, like that, that is vetted through our culture and our language department. And so we're actually going Tuesday to edit the first long cut with our language and culture department. Cause you know, they might say, oh, Heather, you said this and that's not how, that's not the accurate truth or you shouldn't say it that way. Let's cut that piece off. So there's certain vetted things. So that's how we did the Treaty Day video and that's how we're doing the land acknowledgement video. So we can share that publicly because it's been vetted through our own process. But, you know, I agree, I agree. It doesn't necessarily work for every platform or every culture. But when somebody says, can I record it? Generally the answer is no.
I, cause I have asked Heather a lot of times.
Yeah, I think like you had said, there's a lot of people in Ferndale who really want it. But there's a lot of care that goes into how it's presented and the two of them are not always.
Yeah. That's why I think it's important to like work with Candace and the Lactamish Foundation and her aspiration for publishing these children's books. Right? Cause that's a huge, huge, huge piece of literature and knowledge that we can be sharing publicly with, um, our friends in Ferndale.
It, it, it's important that it's done respectfully, like you said. And honestly, there's a lot of YouTube videos that would do a lot better if they had been edited and eliminated.
You know, like there are, I think our teachers are, are ready and willing to teach. It's, but there was a kindergarten teacher who wanted to teach Lummy words to kids. And that, we were respectfully asked that that not happen. That is not an appropriate thing. The same teacher could teach Spanish words and probably, but it's a different. And so we try, we tried to be respectful and we stepped on toes, stepped on toes at times and then, but, um, we're working on it.
And I think we've done, we've done, we, Ferndale, we have done a lot to mend that relationship. There's, there's things that we wouldn't have gotten done without Dr. Fitz. You know, a, a, a key partner in building the relationships with the Lummy Nation. So we're far deeper down the bunny trail than we were just.
So relative to timing of the presentation, um, you know, as, as we look ahead to what's going on all. Our policy on social studies is up for review in November. November, I think it's Native American month and then it'll be the, the release of the video. And also in November, October, we usually have a joint school board, the Lummy School Board. And I'm just wondering if we want to try to coordinate around those things to have a, a special presentation. Does it make sense to do it in November when we're leading up to the policy review of social studies and how we're doing in this area? And Native American month and our joint meeting with the Lummy Nation School Board. What, 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 what are your thoughts on that?
Well, I believe that when I was talking to, uh, Dr. Lynn, she was, uh, to me, it was more like, uh, uh, the refresh would be like hour, like hour. It's just overview.
Did you say you wanted to invite the Lummy Board as well? Did you, when you talked to me the first time?
No.
Okay.
We could.
Okay.
So is she?
Oh, we could do it Zoom.
Oh, it'd be Zoom.
Okay.
We could make that work.
Yeah. Uh, just a refresher, you know, it sounds like you've done this before. I didn't know that. Uh, we, we did. Yeah. We have. Yeah, right. So this would be good for all of us to do it. I need the refresher. Right. I, 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 I like what you had to say, you know, uh, about the things that are going on. I, I could talk with you for hours. But I believe we need a, uh, not, I mean, you know, we're trying to make this happen, make it work. And I think part of it is, the breakdown is, uh, we need to optimize the Lummy to, you know, make sure it's happening. Make the teachers get the resources they need, uh, and we're not saying the wrong thing. But I think that's something we can work on somehow. We can make that happen. So we can roll it out through, you know, high school, middle school, elementary. Because I believe there's a lot of adventure in taking on this curriculum. And, you know, I know the kids will love it.
Yeah. And I think like if there's high school curriculum, like the children's books that you're talking about. I was like, if there's something equivalent for high school, then adults in the community can take care or take advantage of that as well. I mean, there's a lot, it doesn't just happen for kindergartners with a picture book, but can happen like all throughout your life.
That's true. And there was a time, Jessie, and I think it was maybe a couple of years ago, Dr. Cooney, I don't remember, but, um, I was, there was a, there was a committee at, at home in Lummy. And the committee was working on building a resource bank and Travis Brocki was heading it. And so the idea was this resource bank would be much like, here's the STI standard. Here's all the things and then, then these things would be appropriate for, here's the, here's the Lummy approved resources. It would be good for kindergartners. Here's the Lummy approved, that would be good for secondary graders, all the way up to alt graders. So that work started and then, um, there's change in leadership. And then I don't really know where that is right now. I know, um, um, Ciafleutken, um, Felicia, Clewis, Clevisit and I, when we were talking about it, um, pulled, also pulled up the late, um, Doug Bob's resources that he has built in the, in the culture department of all the educational resources that could be shared. So I think it's just probably maybe having a conversation with maybe some of our tribal leaders about making that a priority and pulling those resources together, because teachers want them. We, we in Ferndale, the district wants them, but we have to know what's appropriate and available to you. So that might be somewhere you could help us advocate to.
I know, Magali was working on some stuff.
What's that?
Oh, Magali.
Oh, yeah.
And, uh, she sounded like she had a lot of.
And Dr. Tom's working on a bunch of stuff now down at the.
Who's that?
Pardon?
Who's that?
Let's see, my sister.
A lot of resources.
Yeah. Just need to figure out how the track's gonna pull them together.
Jessie, I sent again the report and I did, um, it, it does have a report from every school on what they're doing. Granted, it's not, it's one that I sent you. Okay. And it's, I surveyed all the schools.
Thank you.
Why don't we ask Jackson to look for a time in October? I'm, I actually don't recall, but I don't think we have usually a study session in November, just because of.
We don't, because usually the conference becomes the second.
But Jackson, could you do a, uh, a calendar, uh, I forget what it's called, but.
Like an outlook, uh, meeting?
Like, no, I did Google, uh, did doodle.
Do a do a poll.
Yeah.
Surprise date.
For dates in October that we could consider doing this.
Absolutely. Coordinate that with, if we're moving, just as all the moving pieces.
Yeah, it's a long movie.
It just so happens, Jackson and Selena and I have a meeting coming up here. We'll, we'll put all those calendar pieces together and see what we can, yeah.
Sounds good. You want a time to, for a study session?
Or a special meeting, depending on what ends up on the agenda.
Challenge of course is, and this is by no means diminishing the importance of this. It's just as we head into the changes of October and the search starting and all, all the groups, timing is going to be maybe more of a challenge, but I don't want you to think that we're not interested or willing.
Thank you.
Times, it may just be, we'll just find that time sooner than later. But, but Jackson will start looking for that and we'll see what we can do. You can be our liaison with the person that, OSPI?
Yes.
Yeah, I know it's the I.
Yeah, thank you.
Called one.
One.
Native educators, right?
All right. Any other comments or thoughts? Thank you for your feedback on this and for updating us on the conference. So the next item on the agenda is 3.04. And this is a discussion of the venue of our future Ferndale School Board meeting. So after the August 31st meeting, we received some criticism about the accommodations we set up for patrons who wish to make a comment, but were not willing to put on a mask. And as you recall, we had them set up out, just outside the door, um, with a computer and chairs. And they could make their comments from there. And, um, you know, I, I think some, you know, the criticism was that we've put people out in the cold. Well, it was, you know, August 31st. But that being the case, it will be cold soon and it will probably be rainy. And we do want to hear public comment. And so one option that we have is to consider, going back to a virtual meeting. We're, we're allowed to do that. And allow patients, uh, patients, allow, um, community members to make their comments via Zoom. And, and Jackson would have to allow them to come in one at a time and exit so that we didn't have a Zoom bomb situation. But it is something for us to discuss, how do we do this? Because we do need to be able to allow public comment and we want to, but we want to do it in a way that is following the mandates, public health mandates that we're under. I'm not willing for us to not follow those public health mandates. I don't think we can choose not to follow public health mandates.
So would people who want to make a public comment, would they have to sign up before the meeting starts? Or could they?
I, how does it work on the backend, Jackson? When people sign into the webinar, they have to give us their email address or maybe some of you know. But can they raise their hand or make a comment or?
Yeah, it depends on how you set it up. So you can set it up. People have to actually register, um, to attend the meeting, um, which is a potential way to filter out some of the bombing and the, you know, make sure their actual legitimate email addresses are identified, at least the, um.
And then, but then can they let us know that they want to be on the screen for, and then?
Yeah.
Jackson, because that's kind of what we did on August 31st.
Yeah.
Yeah. What we did was, and this is what we have done in the past as well. We asked for name, of course, and then phone number and email. Um, and is, you know, and that's just, and that's how, you know, A, I mean, with Zoom. Next, and then also if we want to reach back out to the masks or let's say, or I know, but the last one we. Have a certain amount of time for the total amount of comments and, you know, they're unable to get to us, you know.
Is, I mean, personally, I think us being in the same room works better for conversation and discussing type things. And is it, is, is it any different or is it worse? You know, if they can from home, you know, have a hybrid situation where they can come in. You know, if they don't want to wear a mask or they aren't willing to follow those guidelines, um, which we're under, you know, that's what we're going to be doing. And I would be fine with having to come in via Zoom and replace face picture temporarily with them. You know, have them up there. Cause I, I personally, you know, it, it's super convenient just to be able to click on the computer from home. But I don't feel like our conversation is nearly as productive.
Yeah, I think people could come in, wear a mask and make their comment in person, like a regular one or the Zoom. It's nice to see, see them, you know, but not, not everybody's going to have a camera. Um, and if they don't have a camera, they can't make it over a computer to write what they wanted to say. And maybe have Jackson speak it or something, but the same sort of thing with time limits and.
But not could that do that outdoor thing we did the other day.
Not through winter and everything.
Yeah.
That's, yeah. Well, I, I.
I think there was, with that one, I think there was a desire for the people to physically be here though. So at that time, if they weren't going to wear a mask, then outside was the closest they could to being here.
I, I surveyed the other superintendents, but when we met last week and Bellingham has never returned to in-person meetings. So they're still doing everything via Zoom. The other six districts in Watton County are doing in-person meetings. They have had, um, they've had several of them at their school board meetings in September. And the attendance is considerably down, like under 10. With just, so that the large crowds and, and our crowd was small considered. But we just thought it was worth talking. I don't know.
Well, I, I, I think if we look, I remember, I always look to see how many people are logged in and. I, we, we always seem to have many more people that face to face. And part of that is may have been the ease of logging in from home. I think our attendance was higher when we had virtual meetings and when we didn't.
I, so, well, I like this too. I don't think they can stress this out, even with these speakers. Unless some of the feedback that we've gotten is it's garbled, we can't understand. And I would say that's probably one of the reasons our attendance has dropped off. Where if we go back to virtual, where we're in our own little square, they see our faces and they will hear us.
Well, let me just ask a clarifying question. Just, I'll throw it out there. Were those complaints about garbled sounds and voices from people who are against masks? Or were they from general public who used to attend? Because the only comments I've gotten that have commented on, I couldn't understand you through your mask were from people who didn't want to wear a mask. So I don't know if it's really a broad criticism from the public in general, or if it's just the folks who don't feel like masks are appropriate.
I find it harder to understand people with masks on.
I'm just asking.
I don't hear because people are talking louder, but if I'm talking face to face with somebody with quieter voices, I do rely on reading people's lips a little bit, but since everybody kind of projects a little bit more, I'm fine with this.
When is the new system going to be in, Mark?
Uh, hopefully end of, uh, end of the month, they're coming to install it.
It might be better or, yeah.
End of the month as in end of September?
Yes.
Before the school board or after?
I would, I'm, we're not counting on it being operational for, uh, September.
For 28, yeah.
So can I ask, have any of us, and I haven't, I'll admit that first. Have any of us went and looked at the recorded meetings or listened to them to see?
They're all available on our YouTube.
Have you, but have you?
Um, I have, because I've gone back while watching the minutes, just to make sure I'm getting what you guys say accurately. And it, to be honest, it depends on the person. I can hear okay, but I'm also, when I do that, I have like headphones on and it's in a quieter. it to be honest, it depends on the person. I can hear okay, but I'm also when I do that I have like headphones on and it's in a quieter office, you know. So I guess it would just depend on how what everyone's hearing levels are, how's that their headphones are or computers.
Well, I mean, that that I I like your point that if we're virtual, we don't have to wear a mask and just speak and people see our mouth.
Bellingham being virtual, are they taking public comment, like inviting somebody into the Zoom room to do? Because we didn't take any.
Actual, we only read the um I don't, I think they're still just reading comments. But I can find out.
I would think if we go back to virtual, I would want to be able to bring back verbal public comment from people. I would agree with that.
Do you know Kelly? Is Bellingham taking public comment?
I do not know that.
I guess if other districts are doing it, then it doesn't matter if Bellingham is or isn't, but as long as it's a possible thing, I think it's something that's our constituents.
But there is a loss of the interaction for sure.
Yeah. It's harder to have a conversation because you're worried if you're over talking to somebody or.
Some of us are, some of us don't.
So for our September meeting, do we want to go virtual with trying the virtual comments? I'm I'm sorry, the the letting people into the room to make their comments as opposed to reading comments?
Are you saying going virtual, going back to a Zoom meeting or?
Going back to a Zoom meeting and allow people to enter our Zoom meeting and make their public comment and then exit again.
I would prefer this format with allowing them to come in to make their comments and just us being cognizant of we have to do a little bit more to project their voices, but I can go to virtual too.
So you're saying we would take virtual public comment?
We, I I would say we would take, allow people to come in via Zoom to make public or to come in person if they wear a mask.
They were asked, okay.
That'd be my vote.
I think I'd go with that one too.
Just might want to make their proposal.
Oh, I would move that we would stick with the in-person meeting and people are have the option of making public comment in mass. Attending the meeting in mass or if they would like to make public comment. Prefer not to wear a mask or for medical reasons can't, then they would have the option of making a public comment using.
Or convenience.
Yeah, or convenience, yeah.
Like no more outdoor.
No more.
Alright, so Kevin's proposed that we continue meeting in person, that we allow community members to attend the meeting as long as they wear a mask and if they're attending and want to make a comment, as long as they're wearing a mask, they're free to do so. Um, community members who don't want to wear a mask are allowed to attend by Zoom. And they can make their comments via Zoom to the board.
I would, I would, that second part, I would say anyone can make a comment via Zoom. It doesn't matter why they're choosing Zoom, whether it's because they don't want to wear a mask, whether it's because they're cooking dinner and they're busy that night or whatever, I think, and anybody.
Okay, just stress that those in attendance have to wear a mask. Anyone else can make a comment.
Yeah.
Sure.
Well, I think the the flip side, not that it has to be part of that, that even, you know, if one of us is out of town or not feeling quite up to par, we could join by Zoom too. I mean, I think that's a totally legitimate.
Okay. So I'm not sure if we need to actually vote on that or just consensus. Is everybody good with that?
The only thing I'm wrestling with is um a time limit. So I know we have a three-minute time limit and the last time around, we put like a forty-five minute time limit on the public comment. Um, you know, our job at those business meetings are to do the business of the dis- since we have to make sure we have time at them. So do we think about an hour time limit or do we think about a time limit overall? Because virtual, great, it makes it easier, welcome it to be, so I can come on, I can give.
I I think we still, given everything that we're leading into for September, October, November, I'm I'm very comfortable saying forty-five minutes.
Yeah.
It's.
Three minutes per person, forty-five minutes total, I think is.
Fifteen comments and if people want to submit further comment, they can do so in writing to Mr. D.
And I think it'd probably be pretty rare we would get fifteen comments each time.
I don't want to leave it open-ended because it could take hours and we have a lot of work to do over the next couple of months. And it's it's not to curtail public comment, it's to curtail the time that we can allot to it and provide other avenues for people to make public comment. I mean, we can still get the comments, it just may not be at the board immediately.
Yes, I I I think that's right.
Yeah.
And if we find that we've got a particular need to hear or something, we can always adjust and then add something in place to.
Yes, I would hope that we, the three-minute limit would be enforced and would be enforced equitably. I think there are times where people, you know, on a virtual, mind cure the timer, but just keep going.
Jackson will be able to cut them off.
Actually, I virtually saw a lot nicer than in person.
Yeah, but but I think that.
I thought we were pretty, pretty good on time last time.
Yeah, the virtual people actually were easier because we could, we muted them.
Yeah.
Can we have a microphone that can be muted? Oh.
Try. Alright, then that's what we will do. This isn't on the agenda and so I'm probably breaking some protocol, but could we just have a quick update on opening a school before we go into executive session?
Sure.
Just how how did it go?
It was great. As I said in my letter the other night.
I I did read your letter.
It was happy, I mean Heather said it, it was, you know, she'd been at the meeting the night before and it was kind of negative. We could touch about on how unhappy the master making kids and we were all out in schools most of the week. I just really didn't see anybody that looked very unhappy. Teachers were doing a great job. Probably also read that I told you our enrollment is below budget. It's not, the important distinction is it's not below, we haven't lost kids from last year, we just didn't, our optimistic projection that more of them would come back. So we're we're sitting, sitting at very close to the same number we had last year.
Well, we all thought COVID would be.
What?
We we thought COVID would be better.
We did think COVID would be better. We are going to end up with a robust parent partnership program for this is the over and some people are finding out that's something they like. That's over forty, we're pushing.
Forty-eight today.
As they say, we're getting closer to fifty kids in that program, which we've never had before. So so, but no, it's um it's been good.
Yes, I have something to add. I asked Andrew earlier if I could share this um what I thought was a very heartwarming success story. Um Linda, you said that it was very happy and everyone was excited to be back, but I think we all know that there's also a lot of anxiety out there. Um so a friend of mine had posted something on Facebook and then after a few days posted an update. So I got permission from her to read it and I've taken out names and such like that, but um so she starts, my child, they're breaking my heart. Our school mornings are the same every morning. Mom, I'm really sick. My tummy hurts so bad, I can't go to school. Every morning they take their temperature, trying and hoping to prove that they are sick. They're just anxious. Their tummy is in knots. They say they hate school, but at the end of the day, when I ask how their day was, the report is always good. A three out of five and then four out of five last week, their tummy ache is always gone upon their return home. I tried to ease their anxiety by driving them to school. One of the things they were nervous about was finding the correct line for their class. I helped them the first two weeks of school. This is an elementary age child. I helped them the first two weeks of school. We tried all the tricks, essential oils, talking about school highlights, PE class. Being positive, acknowledging and validating that the way they feel is real, but it's not a virus. They are not contagious and they can go to school. Breathing together, told them times about their dad, me, cousins, all have felt anxious with tummy aches. They say over and over, I'm not anxious, I'm not nervous, I'm sick, but they're only sick Monday through Friday in the mornings. My mama hurts, my mama heart hurts for my child. Any other helpful tips we can try? So she had put this out to Facebook Universe. And a couple of days and about fifty comments later, she posted an update. Thank you, everyone, for your advice. I read every comment and have some great ideas and support. My child got off the bus today smiling and so excited to tell me that they got to go to the kid helping room today. I had emailed their teacher and the school counselor, Mrs. Dale, to let them know that my child is having a hard time. I wanted to loop them in because I didn't want my child labeled as not participating or disrespectful, for example. When they're just so nervous and uncomfortable, they both emailed me back. Turns out my child is extremely shy, doesn't talk, doesn't play with anyone even at recess and is obviously uncomfortable when talked to. The teacher thought this is just their personality. The counselor pulled my child for a quick meeting this morning. My child said she is so nice and they look forward to going to the kid helping room if they need her help anymore. My child also told me that they're going to try positive self-talk with me in the morning. They're supposed to tell me at least one thing they could do to make their day great. My child gave me a few examples of positive self-talk treatment. I'm so glad I reached out to the school support system. They are there because they want kids to feel safe, loved, supported and happy at school. My mama heart feels so much better. I'm looking forward to watching my child grow in confidence and with tools to cope with change and anxiety. I thought that that post and that letter, it makes me now even emotional because that's I think when people have an issue with their kids, they're like, I'll ask my friends and to just think to reach out to the school district, we are here, you guys are here to help those kids. And that counselor, Mrs. Dale, she knew right, right what to do right away. And we know that there are a lot of kids that are feeling this way and I think the one thing that maybe to do is it would have been nice if she knew first before asking Facebook world for advice that she could go to the schools. Right? I love it. I hope you guys like it. Thank you.
One of the things we did do this year that was new is it in all for all students in grades K five during the first three days of school. We invited their families in with parent conferences um hopefully so that they could sit there and tell them things like that. They weren't parent conferences for the teachers to tell parents about their kids, but rather for kids, parents to tell the teachers. Hopefully that would have been a time, you know, that's easy to share. My kid has tummy aches, you know, you know what I'm, that that's our goal.
And as things develop throughout the year, it's like, anytime.
Yeah, anytime, but right off the bat to.
For that particular family and situation, it was a kindergarten family. So those first three days, they're doing parent conferences and watch kids evaluation. So their conferences were just a little bit different.
So, okay, so it wasn't the same kind of.
They they had some different conferences, but the timing is just a little bit.
But but just because of what exact, I'm just saying exactly what you're saying. We want them to know that we want them to tell us how to. What are you like, your, what is your?
Partnering together, you can better meet the needs.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, thanks. I'm glad it was a good opening. Alright, well, um at this time, the board's going to go into an executive session for about thirty minutes to talk about some personnel issues and then following executive session, the board will take action on the two consent agenda. So let's take a five-minute break and we'll meet in the back.
All right, we can, next item on the agenda is the consent agendas. And these are items that the board has had a chance to review prior to taking action. But we can do it as a step process rather than each individual item. But we can do it as a step process rather than each individual items. With that being said, we realized during our executive session that the contract for the interim superintendent was not attached to the consent agenda. And therefore, we can't actually vote on that. And so we have to postpone that. I apologize to the parties involved for not being more on top of that. Take responsibility for that oversight. That being said, there were other items on the consent agenda. And so at this point, I'll entertain a motion.
So I would move to approve the superintendent and the board consent agenda minus six point zero one.
Already it's been moved to adopt the approve the superintendent and the board's consent agenda minus item six point oh one. Is that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So with that, we have reached the end of the agenda for the September fifteenth special meeting. So before I adjourn, I want to ask my fellow board members and members of the sec team if there's anything else they want to share for the good of the order. All right. So our next board meeting will be on Tuesday, September twenty eighth. And of course, you've made some changes to how we will meet and that information will remain public. We will start at seven o'clock here in the Vista Library. And board will be here, but we'll have soon set up for people to attend. Jackson will make that clear for the public as well. So thank you for your participation this evening. And I hereby declare this meeting adjourned.